We're live.
Okay. Call to order. We please have roll call. Darcy.
Commissioner Loops.
Present.
Commissioner Moss.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Present.
Commissioner Pack.
Here.
Commissioner Midah.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Present.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
I'm having problems with my camera here.
And Commissioner Stevens is going to be absent tonight.
Okay, do we have anybody for public comment?
Um. So Martha, I see Peter Finley Frye in the audience. Is Tyler Dean also related to this application? Do you know?
I believe so.
So no, there's no one else, Mer.
Okay, well, then all. Take it to the opening. Okay. The public hearing is now open for consideration of Z zero three one three dash two three dash CP and Z zero three one four dash two three dash Z A P. An application by H and R Properties for a comprehensive plan map amendment to change the land use designation for medium density residential MBR to light industrial LI with a corresponding zone change for medium density residential MR dash one to light industrial MLI to allow for future development, excuse me, of light industrial uses. No development is proposed with this application. Assisting us in the hearing today are several members of the county staff, Principal Planner Martha Fritzy, Planning Director Jennifer Hughes, and Administrative Staff Specialist Darcy Renhart. This public hearing is being conducted virtually with the Zoom platform. Panelists for today's hearing, which include members of the Planning Commission and county staff at both audio and video capability. The applicant will be added as a panelist during their presentation. If a panelist is participating with audio but no video, members of the audience will not see that panelist's name on the screen, but will be able to see them when they speak. Or hear them when they speak. Audience members who have joined the meeting will have their mics muted unless they wish to testify, in which case they will be called upon to do so by the county staff moderator. Audience members' video will not be turned on at any time. Today's hearing is being recorded as required by law. The county will make every effort to post the recording on the county website as soon as possible. The Planning Commission is making a recommendation on the application of the board to the Board of County Commissioners. The record of this hearing will be forwarded to the board, which will make the final decision on the matter. The board will conduct another hearing on this application on December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three at ten a.m. That hearing will be de novo, meaning that the hearing will be started. A new and additional testimony may be offered. Tonight's hearing will not go beyond ten p.m. unless the majority of the planning commissioners in attendance vote to continue to pass that time. If not concluded, it will be continued to a date and time certain. The hearing may be continued for other reasons as well. If an announcement of an additional hearing date and time is made tonight, it'll be the only notice given of that additional hearing. Public hearing will be conducted as follows. Planning and zoning division staff report entry into record of any additional correspondence received. Technical information from government agencies. Testimony by applicants or representatives, maximum length sixty minutes. Testimony by representatives recognizing any community organizations or hamlets. Maximum length ten minutes per CPO. But Clackamas CPO is inactive. Testimony by proponents of the application. Maximum length three minutes per speaker or more determined by the chair. Testimony by opponents of the application. Maximum length three minutes per speaker or more if determined by the chair. Testimony by persons who are neutral on the application. Maximum length three minutes per speaker or more if determined by the chair. Applicant rebuttal, which is limited to arguments addressing evidence already in the record, maximum length thirty minutes. Planning and zoning division staff should rebuttal, which is limited to addressing evidence already in the record. Closing of public hearing, planning commission discussion in action. There is designated time for the hearing when it will be open for testimony. The chair will make it clear when that time is. If you want to provide testimony, you will utilize your raised hand button feature in Zoom. Attendees on C and iPad, you have a raised hand button on the Zoom bar. Depending on their device, attendees by telephone use star nine to activate the raised hand feature. When the moderator switches you over to provide testimony, your screen will look different for a moment. Primarily, you will see all participants' cameras, not just the ones speaking. Staff will call upon you and when it's time for you to provide testimony. For the record, please begin by stating your name and where you're from and whom you're representing. If you would like a copy of the final Board of County Commissioners's decision on this matter, please provide your mailing address. Once you have provided your testimony, your mic will be muted and your screen will be returned to normal. Now is the time set for the public hearing related to the previously identified comprehensive plan amendment and zone change applications. This is a quasi judicial hearing, which means two important things for those participating in the hearing. First, first of all. First, all of the criteria the Planning Commission can use in reaching the recommendation are listed in the notice given by the public hearing and will be identified when the oral staff report is presented. All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the criteria, other criteria in the comprehensive plan, zoning and development ordinance, or other land use regulation that the person testifying believes to apply to this decision. Accordingly, anyone testifying is asked to please direct your testimony to a relevant approved criteria. Second, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties. An opportunity to respond to this issue may preclude appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. Failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the county to respond to this issue precludes an action for damage in the circuit court. Once final, the county's decision may appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals. At this time, I'll ask members of the Planning Commission to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest. Please indicate the nature of that ex parte contact, bias, or conflict of interest, and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from this hearing. Anyone. If anyone wishes to challenge the impartiality of any commissioner, please clearly indicate your intention and do so in any written or oral testimony you provide. The planning and zoning staff will now present staff reports. Martha?
Thank you. I am going to share my screen. I'm a little hoarse today or congested, so I apologize if I keep clearing my throat or coughing. But I'll do my best. So yes, we are here today to discuss a proposed comprehensive plan map amendment and zone change. Specifically, the map amendments and zone change are from medium density residential to light industrial. As Chair Murphy noted, the approval of these files would not actually authorize any developments. It would just change the zoning and no development is currently proposed. Any future development will be subject to designer view approval through the county. So the property, I will probably state it as a singular, is actually two separate tax lots identified here on the map with addresses of one five nine nine seven and one six one oh seven southeast one thirty-fifth. They are roughly a quarter acre south of the intersection of southeast one hundred and thirty-fifth and highway two twelve two twenty-four. Combined, they contain just under four acres. And combined, they have over five hundred feet of frontage on southeast one thirty-fifth, which is a minor arterial. The sites themselves are relatively flat. There's no regulated overlays. There's no wetlands or streams that have been identified. Each lot is developed with one older single family dwelling. One of them, I believe, is nineteen forty-six, the other nineteen sixty-five. And also with several accessory structures, shops, garage storage type structures. Most notably, however, when you look at the surrounding zoning and the surrounding properties, immediately west, north, and south of the property are all zoned light industrial. And in fact, immediately west is a regionally significant industrial area that I'll discuss in just a minute. And it includes a number of very large industrial buildings that are roughly sixty feet away from this property. The lots to the south of this property were also zoned MR one at one point in time and went through a similar comp plan zone change from MR one to light industrial. A couple of the parcels in two thousand and two, and then most recently, the one immediately south in two thousand and twenty. Some of you may actually remember that. You've been here for a little while. To the east across the street is zone MR one. There's a very large mobile home park, sort of hidden behind a large hedge. That mobile home park does not take access off of one thirty-fifth. It takes access from the north off of highway two twenty-four, two twelve two twenty-four. And there are a couple of other MR one zone parcels sort of southeast of this property that are what I call underdeveloped. They are also developed with just a single family dwelling. So this is the zoning map, and it shows these two properties are sort of in this little bump out of MR one zoning, completely surrounded by light industrial, which is that lighter purple. There's some commercial zoning just north of the property as well, right at the intersection of two twelve and one thirty-fifth. There's some fast food restaurants, a couple of auto-related businesses, and some other things like that. Excuse me, and so as with most things, there are many layers, many regulatory layers that we're going to talk about today that property inside of the urban growth boundary needs to meet. One of those layers is Metro, the regional government. And Metro has what they call their Urban Growth Management Functional Plan, and it contains regulations and provisions that the properties within the urban area, Clackamas County, have to comply with. And one of the things in the Urban Growth Management Functional Plan is this identification. It was under the Metro twenty forty plan. This identification of employment areas and regionally significant industrial areas with the intent of of protecting those areas for industrial use. And so the subject here is generally where the arrow is pointing. It is actually identified in an industrial area on the metro. I'll call it the Title Four map, Metro twenty forty growth concept map. It's all the same map. The Title Four map identifies this as industrial land. You'll notice this darker blue immediately west of the subject properties is regionally significant industrial lands. And so this area really is envisioned to be industrial rather than residential. So moving along, regarding these applications, public notice was sent to agencies surrounding property owners, other interested parties back in October. Very few comments have been received. The only substantive comments are listed here. One is from Metro staff who are in support of this change, noting that it would align the county's zoning with Metro's twenty forty growth concept map or the Title Four map that we were just looking at. That comment's in Exhibit Four. And then the Fair Housing Council of Oregon submitted a comment last week that was forwarded to you today. It's just a short email identifying a specific concern with the Goal Ten findings. It's now Exhibit Six. I'll talk a little bit more about Goal Ten in a minute. And then, as noted, the Clackamas CPO is inactive, so we have no CPO comments. So generally, there are a multitude of policies, goals, and criteria that need to be addressed and looked at and met in order for the comprehensive plan designation and zoning designation to change, including statewide planning goals, Metro's Urban Growth Management Functional Plan, the county's comprehensive plan, and the county's zoning and development ordinance. All of the relevant criteria are listed in the Planning Commission's staff report that's in your packet. And detailed findings are found in there. There's also, they're also addressed in the applicant's narrative. So I am not going to go through all of it in nauseating detail. I'm happy to answer any questions that may come up. I'm going to try to hit the highlights of some of the the most relevant goals and policies and criteria listed here. Starting with, we're just going to jump into Goal Ten housing. Under statewide planning goals, Goal Ten is about housing. The unincorporated area of Clackamas County has different Goal Ten rules than cities do. And so it's a little more nebulous. The county is not required to go through periodic review anymore. And so the last official adoption of a housing needs analysis that the county did was in the year two thousand. As you can imagine, a number of things have changed since then. Goal, under Goal Ten, when a property in the urban area and the unincorporated county area is undergoing a proposed comprehensive plan amendment and zone change, Goal Ten specifically said that the county or the applicant does not have to undergo a new housing needs analysis, doesn't have to do that level of of analysis for the proposal. Rather, it needs to demonstrate through findings that the mix and density standards will be met by the amendment. There was a comment received from the Fair Housing Council, again, that's Exhibit Six now, I think, and that said that the county needs to identify a specific need number to address this finding. And while I understand what they are asking for, it's not that simple because we don't have this periodic review. We haven't, we've done a housing needs analysis in twenty nineteen. There was one done, but that was not officially adopted. Metro frequently looks at housing need, demand and supply when they do their urban growth reports in twenty fifteen. You know, the urban growth report is generally for the larger region, not just Clackamas County. In twenty fifteen, there was sufficient zone capacity for housing and sufficient mix. In twenty eighteen, they did expand the urban growth boundary a little bit, mostly not in Clackamas County. And then most recently, in order to expand the urban growth boundary in Washington County, they actually took some land in Clackamas County out of the urban growth boundary. And so there isn't a real easy way to identify a specific need number. What I can say is that since we last did and adopted an analysis, there have been a lot of changes. There have been zone changes that were on on net increased zoned capacity for residential uses. We've increased allowed density for multifamily housing and commercial zones. We've reduced parking standards to encourage or to make it more financially feasible to develop more multifamily housing. And you all probably remember House Bill two thousand and one, the middle housing bill. We also increased the allowed density in all of the urban, single-family residential zones to allow for middle housing. Quite frankly, those zones are now allowed more density than the MR one zone allows. And so since those rules went into effect in two thousand and twenty-two, I just quickly pulled permits. There's, we, we have permitted or are in the process of permitting sixty-six new middle housing units. It seems very reasonable to conclude that even with this loss of potential of forty-six new housing units on these two lots combined, that there is no way the mix and density standards in the urban area would be negatively impacted by this loss. And quite frankly, the subject property is really less appropriate and less suitable for residential development than it is for industrial developments. You know, these properties are not the ones that are developing. The middle housing units that are developing are in more appropriate locations. And so staff feels very confident that this proposal remains consistent with Goal Ten. Excuse me, with this proposal, the county would remain consistent with Goal Ten. Not sure I'm articulating that correctly. Other relevant statewide planning goals would be Goal Nine, which is economic development. It really is marginally relevant here because we would be increasing employment lands, which certainly would further the goals of statewide planning Goal Nine. There's nothing specific in Goal Nine that requires the county to do any additional analysis with this type of a zone change. Under the Metro Urban Growth Management Functional Plan, there's really two titles that are relevant. Those are sections or chapters in the functional plan. Title one is housing and Title Four is employment lands. And under Title One, it specifically states that a county may reduce its minimum zone housing capacity to allow an industrial use consistent with Title Four of the functional plan. Title Four is where we find that map that has identified the property as an industrial area. So there are some other instances in which housing could be reduced. But even without having to address those, this is what this proposal is doing. It is making this property consistent with the Title Four map and the identified industrial area. So those of you who have listened to me ramble on about zone changes know probably that there are four main criteria for a zone change. And they are found in Section twelve oh two in the zoning and development ordinance. The first main criteria is that the proposed zone change is consistent with the applicable goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. The second one has to do with the sufficiency of public facilities that are needed. And then the last two have to do with the transportation system. So this is the big tie up to our comprehensive plan. And so when looking at a proposed comp plan amendment zone change, you do have to look through the comp plan and find any relevant goals and policies. In this case, there were several chapters that had relevant goals and policies, although Chapters Two and eleven really have to do with procedure and coordination, all of which were followed in this instance. Chapter Five requires a traffic study that demonstrates compliance with the transportation planning rule and statewide planning Goal Twelve. And I'll talk about that in a minute, but the applicant did provide such a traffic study that showed compliance. And so then we go to Chapter Four. Chapter Four, the land use chapter, is the one that contains the policies that really direct the county on where certain plan designations can be established. And so in this case, it talks, Policy four point E E point one identifies the light industrial policies. And it states that a property or properties can be zoned light industrial if it has excellent access to the regional transportation network, access to at least a minor arterial, and is large enough for several industries to cooperatively design an industrial park. In this case, we know that this property is on a minor arterial. It's very close to highway two twelve two twenty-four, which is part of the regional transportation network. And at just under four acres, it is very easy to conclude that it is large enough for several industries to cooperatively locate. And it's large enough for industrial park, small industrial park development. Subject meets all of the criteria for light industrial zoning designation. Chapter Eight contains some policies for employment industrial areas. And there, they talk about providing for and protecting established industrial areas from incompatible uses, providing for a broad range in types of industrial uses. This proposal meets that, and especially this first one about protecting established industrial uses from incompatible land use. I think it's fair to say that a property that is surrounded on three sides by industrial uses, it may be much less appropriate to put housing there, which could potentially cause conflicts with the industrial uses in the housing. And so, excuse me, all of the relevant comprehensive plan policies are met by this proposal. And so the second criteria is related to the need for public services and whether or not they're sufficient for development that would occur under the new zoning designation. So we assess this based on statements of feasibility that are signed by the individual service providers. In this case, water, sewer, and storm drainage. Those have been provided by the applicant. And then finally, the transportation system. There's two criteria here. One is that the transportation system is adequate and will remain adequate. And one is that the safety of the transportation system is adequate. And so there was a traffic study submitted by the applicant. It addressed both, addressed both of these criteria as well as the specifics in the transportation planning rule and concluded that if the zoning is changed on this property, it would not have a significant effect on either the adequacy or the safety of the transportation system. And so staff found that this proposal meets all the applicable criteria for the comp plan map amendment and the zone change to light industrial, and therefore does recommend approval of both of these parts. That is it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Martha. Commissioners, any questions?
Martha, Tom Midah here. Excellent presentation as always. And I hope you feel better as far as your throat goes. I was reading Sam Goldberg's testimony that came in today. And I was wondering, how do we numerically state Clackamas County's residential surplus? Is it, is it Metro's two thousand and fifteen designation? Or, I mean, how do we know? It appears to me in his letter, he's asking us to kind of numerically state our surplus. And I might be misinterpreting that, but I was wondering if there's a way to numerically say how much housing surplus Clackamas County currently enjoys.
Well, in a perfect world, there would be. And so I guess part of the reason it's not that simple is that we do not have a recent analysis of housing demand versus supply, versus zones, versus supply and zone capacity because the county's not required to do it. And so to do something like that is very expensive. And it takes a lot of time. And since the year two thousand, we have just relied on Metro's sort of broader regional analysis. We did. We, we did have a consultant complete a housing needs analysis in two thousand and nineteen, which did find actually a deficit, but there were a couple, there's a there were a couple of potential issues with that housing needs analysis. One is that it didn't factor in any zone capacity in commercial areas. And we allow multifamily housing at sixty dwelling units, an acre in most of our commercial zones. And it also, since then, we have increased the zone capacity for middle housing in our single-family residential neighborhoods. And so I don't think that citing the two thousand and nineteen study would be anything close to accurate. What I can say is that Metro is, right now, doing an urban growth report and looking at supply and demand. And that will come out in another year. And the legislature is most likely going to change our requirements under Goal Ten. And we are going to have to do some sort of housing capacity study, which will make this conversation a lot easier in the next couple of years. But right now, we just don't have any good reliable numbers. What we know is in two thousand, it showed that there was a surplus. And based on the zone changes that have happened since then, like, like this one from MR one to light industrial or from single-family residential to multifamily residential, it's been a or from single-family residential to multifamily residential, it's been a net positive um in increasing the potential number of units and then plus all of these other changes we've made that have increased the allowance for number of units. We know that it's higher. We just can't quite pin down a number without doing a whole complete study.
So steps have been taken, the number's higher, but we still can't really say with a lot of accuracy whether we have a a significant housing surplus or a minor housing surplus or a housing surplus of any kind. Truth be told.
And when I say housing surplus, I mean in zone capacity. I don't mean actual houses on the ground. Because we all know that there's a housing shortage of actual houses on the ground. But it's, this is really like the land and the area for it to be developed.
Well, and this, this particular property is intended as light industrial by Metro's plan in any event, right? Um, but without Metro's designation of that for this property, would we, would it be more difficult for us to recommend rezoning? As a, I mean, if this was not in Metro's plan, if it was, if it was Metro's plan to make this residential or was still in that plan, this would be a more difficult decision. Is that fair to say?
Um. I suppose, yes. I guess that's fair to say, although I don't think that that is the only reason that we're recommending approval. I think it does make it easier because it aligns with Metro's vision uh for the industrial.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Thanks.
Commissioner Pack.
Um, I feel like this is a deja vu. Did we look at another property near here that went through some change before? In this area?
Yes, it was the property that's immediately south of these. In twenty twenty, in twenty twenty, um, they went through a similar zone change from MR one to uh light industrial.
So there's still one property that kind of looks like a little um half a cir- or quarter of a circle to the south that are in same predicament.
Yeah, right off, right off the curve. Talking about the one right on the curb. Uh, yes, that would be the only one on the west side of highway, um, excuse me, southeast one thirty-fifth. That would be, that would remain zoned MR one. That's sort of an interesting piece, um, because it's not developed and it looks to me like it's um like a stormwater facility for something.
Oh, maybe, okay. So maybe it's not a property that would change at any point in time. I just feel like it feels um appropriate for this change. And I was just thinking, why not just do all of this all at once? But I understand. So, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? I do want to ask, and this was due to a res- uh, an email I read this morning from Commissioner Pack, and that was on HP Housing, uh, what is it? Housing Production Advisory Council. Now, that's coming out, uh, that was what done by our governor on the first day of her service. Um, and that was to produce thirty-six thousand new units per year. I take it they're not done yet with their uh comprehen- their recommendations for comprehensive plans, since we're not talking about that. Any comment on?
Go ahead, Jennifer.
I mean, I don't have anything to say uh that that's particularly um detailed on this, other than to say, yes, I'm aware that there's this advisory group that's been meeting. I don't know where they are in the process. Um, they're going to make recommendations to the governor, but then what happens with that? You know, there's going to be some, the recommendations in and of themselves aren't going to change anything for us. It depends at that point, then, does that turn into legislation? Or, you know, the governor's sort of like budget priorities or instructions to various state agencies? There's all kinds of ways that that could eventually trickle down. And I suspect that, you know, in the next session of the legislature, um, we're, we're expecting more housing legislation. So we, we're likely to have some changes in terms of what we're required to do with regard, like Martha said, to doing a housing capacity analysis and you know, housing, what, what they call housing production strategies. So there's likely to be stuff coming, but at the moment, um, there isn't anything that would be directly applicable to this application.
Okay, well, yeah, the loss of uh forty-eight units is basically what we're deciding tonight. Or the possibility of forty-eight units being built on these properties uh verse industrial zone. That's uh, you know, we have to weigh that because I know there's been a lot of work to create housing. And just down the street from this is the uh Veterans Village, if I remember right, um, down on Jennifer Street. Am I, am I correct? Yes, that is a little residential area that's right in the middle of an industrial area. So, uh, you know, it, it does happen in this area. I, I, I wanted to ask if uh Trimest services this area. Do we know, I didn't see anything about any kind of bus service down this uh down southeast one thirty-fifth. Not that that makes much difference, but.
I can check. I don't believe it comes down one thirty-fifth. Um, I think, I'll, I, I can check. I have that information somewhere. If you give me a few minutes.
And I'm just responding to what I heard Commissioner Sapp has mentioned last week in a business meeting. Something about uh we, we need more services uh within our metro areas uh in Clackamas County from Metro. Uh, we need recognition uh of this for our future. And uh I just thought I'd mention that in favor of seeing more services so people could actually take mass transit to work if this is going to be an industrial site. I'll stop there. Anyone else have any input?
Okay, I have a general question about traffic studies. I mean, does that consider, and this is just my ignorance showing here, but does it consider like truck traffic and the needs for larger vehicles in those areas? When it changes to industrial or is it simply just the number of trips involved or? I, I don't know how detailed the traffic studies are, and it's only my ignorance of traffic studies, frankly, that I'm asking about here.
So a traffic study for a zone change um is a little bit more theoretical than a traffic study you might do for a specific development. So to meet the tea- the transportation planning rule, the traffic study looks at um the reasonable worst case. Um, traffic generated jet, what traffic, what's the most traffic generative development that could occur on the property in the existing zoning versus the future zoning? And looks at the differences and what impact that would have on the transportation system. Um, I do not believe that portion of it unless the truck traffic is somehow factored into the traffic generation numbers that the, that the traffic engineers use. I don't know that that's necessarily factored in. Um, we also, in addition to that, at the counting, we require an assessment of safety. And that's where I think some more of those factors come in. They look at crash histories um and things like that. And I know that it's, it's largely based on crash history. Um, but I can also say that one of the reasons that to get to, to meet the criteria for an industrial zone is to be on at least a minor arterial is so that truck traffic is not going through lo- going on local roads. Um, so that the thought behind it is that um if you have an industrial zone, it needs to have good access to, you know, the arterials and the highways and like the larger, the larger higher capacity roads in the transportation system.
So not our end of it, but in the specific zoning application, those things do get considered itself. Yeah. Thank you.
So Martha, on that, wouldn't it, it, once they file for development, uh, when they, when they are asking presenting for a building permit, um, they would have to show what kind of access they have to one thirty-five and whether they're going to widen their access or something of that nature, which might bring on another traffic study. Am I correct?
Um, they would have to go through a design review, just like any other commercial or industrial development. Um, and they would have to show circulation and access, and it would need to be appropriate. Um, I don't, this, this area is exempt from concurrency, right, Jennifer? So it wouldn't just automatically have to do a traffic study related to that. Um, I think that if there was something significant, it could potentially trigger it. But just generally speaking, it would not be required to do a traffic study.
Commissioner Peterson, do you have anything to say? Commissioner Wilson?
Um, the only thing I have to say is I believe that we need to de- uh develop industrial areas in order to get jobs in the, in the community. And if this is going to help do that, I think it's a good move.
Thank you.
Commissioner Moss?
Uh, great presentation as always, Martha. I got no questions. Look forward to present for the applicant in the public hearing.
Commissioner Lopez?
Did you say me? Okay, um, I had, I'll say something. Um, it appears that the reason the owners of these properties brought this forward is for potential future development of those two lots with light industrial. However, there are homes, one on each property. My question is, who owns those homes? Is it the la- is it the property owner? Are they rented out? In other words, will people be displaced? Do they know about this? My concern, of course, is for the residents of those nineteen forty-five house and nineteen sixty-five house or whatever they are.
Good question.
So you can, you can ask that question to the applicant. Um, we probably should move to, to that section um before we do any deliberating, Chair Murphy.
Yes, okay, we'll keep going. Okay. Are there any, well, let's see, where am I? Have we received any other correspondence on this matter other than the items that are in the meeting packets? And I think we've already circulated that and answered that question. Uh, that was one.
That's right.
Yeah, okay. Are there any other government agencies here to provide technical information related to the application? Okay.
No.
Any other questions from the commission? The applicant may now present the proposal. You have a maximum of sixty minutes. There are, are there any representatives of the community planning organizations, which we already?
Not yet, Murph. We need to move the applicant over, so let Darcy go ahead and do that.
Hi, Peter Finley Frye, do you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Uh, Peter, thank you. Um, Peter Finley Frye, I'm a land use planner, AICP. Um, I'm not a lawyer, just to be clear. I wanted to thank Martha and staff for the excellent work they've done. They pretty much done my job for me. Thank you. I wanted to respond first to the question raised by Commissioner Lopez, if that's okay, before I make my presentation. So um, the property on the north side is uh owned by uh Bussy, who's my client. And uh, that house is not a house anymore. It's, they um, they're in the process of acquiring it, but that house is being used uh office-like. The second property on the south is owned by Sue, and her last name I cannot remember at this moment. Uh, I did talk to her several times. That house actually was moved there by her father. And uh, so she has an emotional attachment to the house, and I do not expect that house to be removed in the near term until um she releases her um feelings for the house. I just want to answer your question very directly. I ho- I hope that's sufficient. If not, I can get more information for you. But in it, neither case are tenants going to be evicted, to my knowledge.
Well, it sounds a lot, hi, um, it sounds like the lady named Sue actually owns the home. She's not like renting it, and um she's attached to it. But you say you've given her um, I, you know, basically a confidence that she won't be ousted or something won't happen to her home uh because of the light industrial zoning change.
Correct, and she continues to own her property and will own it. I believe after this, we are not buying it until this is done, and maybe we would never, she is her own person. I just want to be clear, and she has joined this. She is a part of it. I have talked to her several times as well as Tyler, so she's fully informed. I, I want to be clear that she is her own person. You, you understand, right?
And will her property taxes change because she'll still be living there in a house that was zoned residential and now it's zoned light industrial? Could that cause a significant increase in her property taxes?
It, it, it may, and I can't answer that directly, but she's fully aware of the situation. She's had a lot of time to think about it.
I would note that she, she signed the application. This is Commissioner.
She did. I, I just want to make clear that we're not controlling her future. That's what I want to be clear about. She controls her own future.
Okay, again, right, just, you know.
It's a good question. I, I agree. So I'm going to go into my presentation now, if that's okay. Okay, well, I, I actually don't have much of a presentation because Martha's done such an effective job. I wanted to only make two points. Uh, one's a simple point, which is called land use patterns. And I think this is clearly consistent with the land use pattern in the area with industrial on the west side of one thirty-fifth and residential against the river on the uh east side, one thirty-fifth. I want to also point out that that land use par- pattern, excuse me, has been reinforced by physical realities, which is the housing on the east side does not have direct access to one thirty-fifth. There's a uh lot, actually, uh between the housing and uh one thirty-fifth. It's uh, you can see it on the map, and we also put it in the application. So I wanted to point out that the world, nature, whatever you want to call it, is also trying to be consistent with the way these patterns should exist. And these patterns exist because, as you know, as planning commission members, uses have synergy amongst themselves and uses also adversely impact each other. For example, industrial uses do not and are not typically compatible within a residential neighborhood. And a residential neighborhood is not compatible inside of an industrial area for obvious reasons. Um, but I could go into it if you wanted me to. So I, I want to make that point first. Is this, our primary argument is this change is consistent with the pattern of uses that exist and continue to grow in this area. Um, the, I did get involved in the other comp plan zone changes, so I'm uh very aware. I wanted to point out the property on the south end that you've identified as an anomaly is actually a stormwater facility. And I don't believe it ever be developed for private purpose. So it, my opinion is the zoning is not really relevant on that property. Um, that's just my opinion. So I want to focus a little bit more on this housing issue because the housing issue came up before. And it'll probably come up again because the housing issue has been very politicized, not just in Oregon, but nationally. And the housing issue is primarily regarding affordable housing. And it's my impression, again, that the state um Housing Task Force is trying to create affordability through uh supply. It's the trickle-down theory. supply. It's the trickle-down theory. If you create enough quantity, it'll drive the price down. Uh, obviously, I don't agree with that theory, but that's what's going on. In this case, we're making two arguments. One argument is we're, we are arguing that it's not possible to, um, adequately identify housing need. It's just that there's too many variables involved. And that's complicated by the fact that in a normal world, there would not be housing in counties except for rural housing, because in a normal world under state law, housing needs to occur within incorporated cities that provide services like police and parks and things that, well, counties do provide parks, but for example, Multnomah County does not. I know Clackamas County still does. The counties are counties, they're not cities, and cities are where incorporated growth, housing, and all that normally would occur. Now, Clackamas County is, uh, not normal in the sense that it's an urban rural county in that it's on the, it's, I live out in the gorge, and we're in what's called an urban rural interface. And what that means is that means that in these counties, Washington, uh, Clackamas and Multnomah, you have a lot of urban growth in county areas. And I'm trying to explain so you understand why the state treats cities differently than counties in terms of identification of housing need and demand. Um, and cities obviously are a lot easier to analyze from a point of view of data. So we argue that it's really impossible at this level with the variables that exist and this disconnect between counties and cities to really do what these, uh, organization would like. And I would assert in the record that the organization's driven more by political considerations than, um, uh, technical, but that's my opinion again. The main argument we're making though is not, uh, an argument about need. It's an argument about quality. Where do you want people to live? Where do you want to provide housing? What kind of homes do you want to provide? What kind of livability do you want to provide? Do you want to shove people everywhere you can into whatever pocket you can find? Or do you want to build communities and residential neighborhoods? And so we're making that argument in this case fundamentally. This is not a good place to have people. People should not be living here. The county should not be putting this out as, we would argue, a false presentation of a housing. Uh, and this again is my opinion. It may not be. In fact, I just wanted to present our view to you for your consideration. We believe that this property is best suited for light industrial development. And that's our presentation. Our application goes into a lot more detail, and I know you can read, so I didn't want to be redundant. And again, the staff did a super excellent job covering all the bases. So, I, I'm here for questions.
Any commissioners have any questions?
I have one, Murph. Mike Wilson.
Go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner Wilson.
What was the impetus of selecting this property, uh, for your analysis? Uh, Peter, did you, uh, were you approached by someone that they want to look at that property for a future industrial development? Uh, what, what got you rolling on this?
Okay, so I'm a consultant and, uh, I've done work in Clackamas County, and so, uh, Butch Bussy and Tyler Dean came to me and asked me to help them do the zone change. So I'm not part of the development at all. I can't exactly speak to why they picked this particular property other than it was available. The property to the south was identified as not the same zone as where we wanted to go. So we, I believe, and Tyler's here could maybe speak more directly, approached the property owner and asked them if they wanted to go together with us. Um, it, this is a significant cost savings to her, as you may, because it doesn't cost more to have two properties. So our intent was not to develop both properties. It was simply to develop ours, and then we found out about hers, and it just seemed uh, fair to her to pay her way to this conclusion. The, I don't know if I answered your question correctly.
Well, you, you, you got close. I was just wondering, you know, you were approached, uh, by someone that's looking at that property for appears to be a future development of some type of an industry. And they must, um, you know, have I don't know why they were looking at that particular area. Uh, you know, it's not a, a big deal, but I was just curious as to, you know, what got them started looking at this particular piece of property? Is it, has it got some advantage for what they want to do in the future when the property becomes available?
Um, I, actually, uh, Tyler Dean would be able to answer that much more effectively than me, because I'm just here to do the planning part of this.
Okay.
Well, I think Darcy can move Mr. Dean over.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wilson, you have a question for Mr. Dean?
Hi there. I think I made it in unmuted.
This is Tyler Dean. He's one of the two owners.
Welcome, Mr. Dean.
How are you?
Good.
So to clarify, I'm Tyler Dean. I'm an agent of the owner. Um, I deal in real estate and sell a lot of industrial and just property in general throughout Clackamas County. So I can speak to the intention here and, and the history and, and how this came about and why we called Peter and, and looped Sue Owens in, who's the property owner to the south of the, the parcel. Um, so Butch Bussy owns the, uh, northern subject parcel in question here, and the parcels around it are zoned industrial. The northern parcel that Butch Bussy owns is developed with six warehouse-type structures on it already. Uh, so with the zoning of the parcels to the west and the north and the south already being industrial, it begged the question to Peter Finley Frye of whether or not um, we could make a more congruent zoning with the current state of the property and make it industrial. Butch Bussy, uh, the ownership of the northern parcel, ironically, historically, has been a home builder for many, many years out throughout Clackamas County in Oregon. Um, and his sense in the probably past ten years or so got into developing and owning, uh, more industrial property. He's built, since I've been involved with him over the last fourteen years, I think we've built six or seven different, uh, industrial projects. Uh, four or five of those have been in Clackamas County with the latest one being at the corner of a hundred and thirtieth and highway two twelve by Dean's Homestyle Cafe there. In any case, he's active in the area. He builds nice buildings. This particular property, the intention, uh, to answer your question, since it's already developed with, uh, fairly new warehouse buildings on it, um, there's no immediate uh, intention to develop it further in the near term, but that is certainly what he does and um, builds more industrial manufacturing-related buildings. Uh, so that would be the long-term intention for it, but uh, in the near term, the intention was to just bring the zoning more congruent to, um, the surrounding property.
So Tyler, can you speak to Sue briefly?
Absolutely. So when we first went to Peter, um, in discussions on the northern parcel, which is the northern three acres of this for three point nine seven in question, um, we were headed down the path to go through the application and realized that the only parcel left on the entire block on the west side of a hundred and thirty-fifth would be the parcel owned by Sue Owens uh, and her husband. And it's a single-family house in the front where it fronts a hundred and thirty-fifth. And then in the back, uh, it is, the rest of the property is leased to an industrial equipment company, uh, for kind of yard storage and a shop. So the property as it's currently being used is, is caught in between the two. So we went to Sue and just asked the question as we were going through this, if, if she would have any interest in, in joining along while we were going through the effort, uh, knowing that when we were gonna do it, it was gonna take some time and effort, and if she intended to do it in the future, it may make more sense for her to do it now rather than uh, start the process over in the future. So she took quite a bit of time and had a lot of questions for Peter and myself, and I believe she spoke with, uh, Martha as well. And ultimately decided that, yeah, that's something that she wants to do. Uh, she made it very clear, though, um, through her process, she still intends to own the property long-term. Uh, it's got some sentimental value to her through the family, and she doesn't have any intention on changing the the current use of the property, um, in the short term, but in the long term, I think she agreed that she would prefer to have the underlying zoning of the property be consistent with the, uh, apologize for the dog bark in there, uh, consistent with the surrounding properties. Um, and I think the last thing that I would say is it's, in my experience, um, doing industrial and commercial real estate throughout that corridor, I think it's highly unlikely and impractical that you would have a developer come along and want to put forty-six units, uh, of residential property on that site. If you look at it from an aerial, you see the east side of the road, and you see all the, the units of the manufactured home park, and it looks kind of congruent to where they may go together, but if you're down there on the ground, it's like two different worlds, because there's such a, there's a large wall on the east side of a hundred and thirty-fifth. And that corridor that runs through there on a hundred and thirty-fifth that connects to two twelve is quite the thoroughfare for industrial property. Um, everything to the north is kind of heavy equipment-related landscapers, and then to the south, there's a flagging, industrial flagging operation. And on the west is Pearlogus. Um, they're one of the largest industrial owners of real estate in town, and they have about a say it's almost a million square feet of industrial park between six buildings there on, on the west side. That's about sixty feet off of the buildings there, so. I think that covers most of the open questions that I can answer. Other than the Veterans Village was brought up. That's interesting. Um, it's actually zoned industrial down there in the Veterans Village, and that one's gonna go in the other way for the, from a use case standpoint of um, utilizing industrial property, and I think it's worked out pretty well, um, for that use and in that particular location. Um, other than it's pretty disconnected from, from services, but I have another client that owns some property near it, and, um, it's seemingly working out pretty well for its intended, intended use down there, but it's not a residential zone there south of Jennifer Street. That's industrial land that's, I think, being utilized for currently residential purposes.
Okay, well, thank you, Tyler. Is there any other questions?
Commissioners? Yeah, and I would just like to comment that it's our job to ask these questions.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, that's why we're here.
Yeah, I was on Multnomah County Plan Commission fifteen years.
Yeah, yeah, we have to get down in the dirt and ask these.
Yeah, absolutely. I appreciate it.
Okay, nothing else from anyone else. Thank you, Mr. Frye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gotcha. Hey, do we have anybody online that would like to speak in favor of this?
There's no one else in attendance. Think you can, you can skip all that and move right to the, to the deliberation phase, Murph, because nobody's here.
Any comments? Tom Two, why don't you start?
Am I already getting a reputation for being the loudmouth here? Well, you know, I gotta say, philosophically, every time we choose to make one of these kind of one-off changes that reduces potential residential property, um, you know, we, we add pressure to the problem. We do. And, and given the fact that we've taken an awful lot of steps to try to increase residential housing, but still don't really know whether we've successfully done so or not, is, is a difficult thing to accept when we're gonna, again, reduce the number of potential housing units. Having said that, you know, with Metro's designation, uh, I would not oppose the change here. I, I think we need to, to approve this one. But I gotta say, if Metro didn't identify it as an industrial, you know, appropriate use, I don't think I would. I mean, I, I think I would have a difficult time walking away from, what was it, forty-six potential units, but.
No, thank you, Tom, and that makes a lot of sense. I mean, we still see a lot of homeless, and so it, this is something that, you know, it hits with you, that are we taking away property that could possibly be built? But this does make sense, and they do make points. That you don't want to have a housing unit inside of an industrial site. You're asking for potential problems, uh, health-wise, I would think, but, uh, let's move on. Uh, Tom One. Commissioner.
Okay, I've, I've kept my mouth shut up until now. Uh, because, uh, I know this property well. I drive by it all the time when I go to play golf at Sahalee. So I know the property, uh, when I, when I first looked at it, it's like, uh, this is a no-brainer. Uh, but I realized you still have to go through all the steps. Whereas I appreciate the fact that we might be giving up some housing. I can't imagine anyone wanting to live there. Kind of following on Peter's comments, I think you want to make sure you do plant housing in a thoughtful manner where you pervade livable communities, not just cram it wherever you can find a spot. Which, uh, if you recall, I wasn't a big supporter of the, the village for the same reason, or losing industrial property uh, and making it for housing. It had no services. And other than the McDonald's and the Starbucks, uh, a couple blocks away from the site, there's really not much surfaces for people to live there. It doesn't have any kind of a residential feel, feel. The street is extremely busy with traffic. Uh, so in my mind, this is like, yes, uh, oh, this is a logical thing to do, and let's focus our energy on housing in places that make sense and not, not worry about, uh, a one-off property that's totally been, uh, converted to an industrial use. So I wholeheartedly support, uh, the staff's recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson. Very well said. Commissioner Lopes?
Um, now that I have my question answered about, you know, I was concerned about people living in the houses and being ousted, and that doesn't sound like that's an issue on either lot. Um, I'm, I'm fine with it, right. I know there's the loss of potential for forty-six housing units or whatever, but that is probably not gonna happen any which way. And, um, yeah, it does make sense with all that light industrial to the north and to the west and to the south, and of course, the east has the, a mobile home park, but yeah, no, I think I, I'm in agree with the staff report for approval of the change.
Thank you. Commissioner Beck?
I really don't have, uh, anything more than what's already been said. I, I, I think it's important to use lands where it makes sense in a way that makes sense to put housing in this area. I mean, we had same conversation about the three lots south of this area, so I'm not really sure that this is that much different than what we've already talked about before, so I'm, I too am in support of staff recommendation.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
Well, uh, Murph, as I said before, I'm, I'm all for, uh, industrial development. And it looks like, uh, this looks like a good future, uh, for this protector piece of property. I'm, I'm all for it. Good job.
Great. Well, thank you, Mr. Wilson. Commissioner Wilson, uh, Commissioner Moss?
Thanks, Murph. Yeah, I, just like Tom, I've driven that road many, many times down to the golf course and around, and a lot of people use it to get around the traffic on two twelve, two twenty-four there to then get on at that light to continue east towards Damascus and Sandy. So, I mean, that area is clearly industrial, light industrial. It, it. Industrial, like industrial, it it really should have made the change long, long ago in that area, so it just seems like. These lots were kind of just off the beaten path and forgotten, so yeah, this seems very simple to move forward, so when we're ready, I have a motion.
And of course, I had some questions too, but I, uh, have heard some answers, uh, that. Kind of changed my direction. Um, I, um. I'm very supportive of this because it does keep industrial on one side of the street. Uh, livable communities across the street, I'm going to stick with that. So do I have a motion? To accept this?
Mister Chair, I move approval of Z zero three one three dash two three dash CP. And Z O three one four dash two three dash Z A P, subject to the following conditions as laid out in the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Moss, do I have a second?
I'll second it. Sorry, I beat you to it, Louise.
Well, that was seconded by, uh, Commissioner Peterson or Commissioner Lopes?
Take your pick.
All in favor?
I.
Hi.
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 Unanimous. Okay, I think we have, uh. A past recommendation. And, um, okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Fry, Mr. Dean, thank you very much, very well done. Okay, so I think it's time to close this hearing. The public testimony portion of this hearing is now closed. Are there any further questions from staff? Okay, that's done. Motion has been made. I close this public hearing. I guess we ne- move next to minutes. Has there been any? Comments on minutes of our last hearing? Do I have a motion?
I move we approve the minutes of, uh, October twenty-third meeting.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I abstained since I wasn't there.
I too abstained.
We have two abstains and one, two, three, four.
I five zero two.
There we go. Thank you, and it motion passes. And new business. If there is any.
I don't have any, I don't have anything new for any of you, I do not think, um. We. I mean, I guess sort of bleeding into schedule, we'll kind of merge the two things together, um, so. The, um, we had held the first meeting in December, just in case this needed to be continued, it does not. So you will not meet in December, or the second meeting was Christmas, so we had already, of course, canceled that, so. No December meeting, um, we do have a few things coming in the new year, but we haven't finalized the schedule yet. Uh, Martha is working on the next round of minor and time-sensitive amendments, which. Includes some that are more time-sensitive than minor. Um, the ones related to accessory dwelling units and temporary, or not temporary, excuse me, um, recreational vehicles as. Dwellings in the rural areas, I know that's gonna. Those are gonna be issues of, um, I'm sure, great interest to the planning commission, so there will be a package coming with that. Um, as well as some other, what I would describe as more minor changes. The board is having a policy session Wednesday to talk about whether, uh, to make some amendments to the zoning code. Or at least consider some amendments to the zoning code related to public utility facilities. Um, our code is very, um, very, very old on that topic and frankly lacks. The specificity it needs to have in terms of what qualifies as a utility facility and. Um, it's time to have a discussion of how those things are are permitted, um. Conditional use versus outright, that kind of thing, so those, there's gonna most likely be something coming on that. Probably a policy session in late January for, or a study session in late January for the planning commission is my guess. Uh, but I won't know for sure until the board says yea or nay on Wednesday on whether they want us to move forward with that. Uh, so those are the next two things on the kind of legislative side. And then as far as applications, Martha, we don't have anything else like from property owners, anything in now, but there's stuff that you. Are kind of expecting.
Right.
So there's some things percolating, but nothing's in yet, so I imagine there's gonna be some things to keep you busy in the. In the winter and, uh, and early spring, but we'll get you a definite schedule, um, sometime next month, hopefully.
Any possibilities of workshops or seminars?
What was that?
Just to keep our interest.
Well, as much as I would like to do that, the problem is I don't have enough staff, um, we're, we're down, you know, as you've known, we had. Um, hired someone who ended up deciding to go work for the port, um, and so.
Who's that?
Didn't work out, yeah, Tom, she, I, she said your offices at the port were fantastic, and I said, I know, I've seen them, but.
They're, they're never, they're never there anymore now, whenever I go there, it's empty.
Anyway, it was unfortunate, um, she was really great, but, um, had kind of had this other job sort of, sort of. Percolating when we hired her, and so she, she left, so with that, we have that opening and then, um, you know, we've still got a couple vacancies that we're holding. For budget reasons, we may look at filling one of those, so right now, we're just. Pretty much at the limit to just do what we have to do, so there just really isn't the ability to kind of do those nice-to-haves. And so I can't commit to anything above and beyond what we've already, we kind of know is gonna be coming to you. Um, but I guess I'll say noted, Murph, and if we get, if get the opportunity.
I, I'm just, uh, thinking, well, you know. Did Glenn's, was Glenn fishing when he sent in that, uh, testimony? Was he fishing for his old position?
No, I don't think so. I mean, I think that's part of his new job is to. Is to review and respond, um, to notices from all the metro area jurisdictions. The good news though is that when Glenn reveals our, reviews our proposals, he knows exactly what we're saying, so this is actually good. It's good that he's, that he's reviewing them and and understands our, our rules and and all of that, but, but yeah.
Side are there.
Happy.
Seven sixty-two, is that generating any work, uh? That will be seen in rural areas, uh.
Is that the wildfire one? I get my numbers mixed up, Murph.
Okay.
That's the wildfire bill, right?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, which was then modified some through, I think, was it Senate Bill eighty this last time, um. It's not at the moment generating anything on the land use side, um, they are, you know, working on the wildfire hazard map. Again, um. If it hasn't already, it's gonna be going out for public comment, I think in the not-too-distant future. Um, they have made some changes to, you know, fewer categories and I, there's, there's been some changes made, but it really is gonna end up. At least in its present form, um, being something that's. Applicable to the Oregon State Fire Marshal's Office and then some building code requirements related to. Fire hardening of new structures, the fire marshal stuff is defensible space. So there will be people, um, homes that are in the, what they call the wildland urban interface that will have new requirements. But they're not land use requirements. Now, there has been discussion and it's that ultimately. Department of Land Conservation and Development may do some rulemaking or have some role that would then lead to something for us. But at this point, it's too soon to say what that would be.
We have a Mount Hood Corridor wildfire, wildfire prevention and preparedness, uh. Committees, actually, we have two of them, we have one for HOA CPO. It meets just before the agencies come together, same day, same building, um, and this is to. Try to live how, learn how to live with wildfire. Um, you know, this is something that is gonna be a part of our lives from here on out, uh, obviously. And, you know, if we could adopt, uh. Using wildfire or fire period as a tool instead of running from it, and. This is something I think that would really help the Ma- Mount Hood Corridor and really help communities understand. The dangers and the uses of it, this is more of an indigenous look at, uh, fire usage, um, they. Um, had said in some of our wild, uh, some of our, um, watershed council. Uh. Meetings that we have had, uh, stating that water is accepted. And fire is accepted as both equal. Parts i- in environment, they're both useful, they're both useful in the house, they're both, uh, useful outside for foraging. This is something that we accept and, uh, this is something that I would like to see. Happen in the corridor in the future, some, you know, it might not be in my lifetime, but, uh, maybe we'll see some management, uh. Through our force with more, uh, fire, uh, to minimize our. Ladder fuels that are causing some serious issues.
I have a question.
Yeah, anybody, yeah.
I have one, uh, so, so Jennifer, when is the annual, uh, holiday bowling party planned for this year?
We're not, we're not having one, actually, this while.
Well, you know, I, I don't recall having one since Mike left, so I was just thinking about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wondered if that just kind of went by the wayside.
Well, we haven't had one since COVID. COVID, yeah.
I've, yeah.
Yeah, we, we haven't gone back to it since COVID, and you know, it's, it's funny, I didn't even really, it's gotten now, I didn't even think about it this year. I mean, probably I should ask the question again, but it, we're probably a little late to do it for, um. For December at this point, but, um, we, we could resurrect it, I don't know, a lot of the. A lot of the people who were really into bowling are no longer like Mike and Nikki Cross.
Yeah.
And Rick McIntyre, some of these people who really like to bowl have kind of retired or moved on.
Yeah.
But, um, but I don't know, our, our staff still might like to, to do that again, the planning commission could have a bowling party.
Well, I guess I, I was my lead-in to a proposal. When I thought of that bowling party, I remember going back a few times and it was fun.
Yeah.
It was, it was fun to kind of mix up with this, uh, staff a little bit at a more informal setting, always enjoyed that.
Yeah.
Um, but since we never meet in person and we don't have much opportunity to chat or chat, talk to folks afterwards, I was. Going to propose, uh, if anyone's interested, maybe, uh, scheduling a. Uh, lunch or coffee, uh, happy hour or coffee, uh, for anyone who wants to get together. I, I know the little event we had for Brian was, was kind of fun, uh, it's nice to catch up with everyone. And I'm thinking, well, we don't get that opportunity anymore, so maybe we just gotta do our own, so. I'll send out an email, uh, see if there's any interest, any ideas. And, you know, maybe we can set a, a date the next month where we just get together and, uh, socialize. We can do that, right, without it being a quorum?
Yes.
Okay.
Just don't discuss, don't discuss county business while you're there.
Not a problem, I won't.
I can keep them on their toes, part of my day job.
So, uh, so anyway, if anyone has any thoughts or ideas, I won't take up any more time in the meeting, but, uh. Uh, I thought I'd throw that out there just to see if there's any interest, so, and darn, I was hoping you would invite me to the bowling party, but. Maybe next year.
We're having a, we're having a quarterly staff meeting with a potluck at the office where we're gonna have training on findings and conditions, if you're excited.
I'm all over that, yes.
But yeah, there's not, there's not a big bash, so.
A- any meeting with the commissioners in the future?
About that yet either, that's, um, uh, kind of on my mental list, um, as I recall, last year's was a little difficult. To logistically pull together, we might have actually, I need to check with my, with my boss, actually, because I think maybe the idea was. That the board's office might, might, uh, believe it or not, host it this time rather than, um, planning department. But I don't know if that's really gonna happen or not, so I'll make a note. About that.
Let, let me know if you need me to make some phone calls.
Yeah.
Hey, Kevin, you're on it.
I know a few people.
Yeah, I'm sure you do.
Can I, just speaking of the board, um, this Wednesday. We have a public hearing to discuss the, the last, um, item that you talked about, the Lammer Greenway. Um, change in designation and the dock. And then this, um, these two applications are going to the board on December, Wednesday, December thirteenth. Um, and so obviously, we will take your recommendation forward, and I don't know, um, if Murph or anyone. Wants to think about attending that to present the planning commission recommendation, you don't have to, but, um, that is something that we've started. Doing from time to time, so think about it.
Yeah, I mean, that, I, I apologize for missing the last meeting, I had all the intentions. That I have a pretty full calendar, I, I will put it on my calendar right now, and, uh, if I can't do it, I'll. Anybody else, uh, wanna take a chance at it? And it's just to go and describe what we talked about, you can bring this video up, write a little statement that you could read. Just so we can deliver, a- as we talked before, help out Martha and Jennifer, uh, because I'm sure they're, they have a hundred different things they have to talk to. Uh, the commissioners do each week, um. If we could just let them know how we reached our decision, what was talked about. And, uh, deliver our decision, our recommendation. And if someone else can help. That'd be awesome.
I'm gonna be out of town, so I will not be available.
You could do this on Zoom.
Well, I don't know, I'm gonna be in France, and so the time difference may be a little bit challenging for me.
I was gonna say, I'd love to, but I'll be processing, we're having our last board meeting of the year on Tuesday, the twelfth, so I'll be processing the materials on the thirteenth.
Oh, when is that again?
Wednesday, December thirteenth.
Yep, thirteenth.
And, and I mean, this one is a particularly controversial, um, and so if it, if, if it doesn't work out, that's fine, but I just want to let you know when it was.
And, and thank you for that, I meant to bring that up last time, Martha, um, and how did that meeting go?
Which meeting?
Um, last Wednesday's policy.
It's, it's this Wednesday, it's in two days. The board hearing for the Greenway is in two days, on the twenty-ninth.
Oh, it's on the twenty-nine?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay, I may be there, let me check.
It's gonna go great, Murph.
I can, I can screw things up, come on.
No, that's not what we want.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
We want it smooth.
Okay.
What can we do for you, Jennifer, besides butt out, right?
I was told that was not going to be the job, yeah, when I was first, but put on.
You were told the job wasn't to make it smooth?
Exactly, I was the question, everything, if I remember.
Yeah.
S- so you can make it, Murph?
No, I can't, I'm in a doctor's office.
Uh, when, when is it again, sis, Wednesday at what time?
We've got, we've got two, we've got Wednesday, November twenty-ninth, so two days from now at ten AM. And that's the Lammer River Greenway dock one that you heard previously, and the second one is Wednesday, December thirteenth, also at ten. And you can come in person or be on Zoom, and that's for the one you did tonight.
Okay.
Oh, so we moved the land use from nine to ten, Jennifer?
Yes, they went, it was, it used to be nine thirty. Yeah, we didn't.
Yeah, I said, I said, I like those early meetings.
But the.
With you guys, that was great time.
Yeah, the board's office decided they wanted everything starting at ten, so Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, everything starts at ten, so.
Okay.
So, yeah, so you don't have, if you want to decide tonight, that's great, if not, you can just let Martha know, we just like to have a little bit of a heads up. So we can let the chair know to expect that somebody will be on Zoom, if you're, if you're in the room, we'll know that you're there, so.
And I just want to comment last, I, I watched, uh, last. Last week's business meeting, I guess that took place on Wednesday, and, uh, Commissioner Savis. You know, was really emphasizing that he doesn't feel that we're being included. Uh, in Metro, that they're kind of working around a lot of rural Oregon, so to speak, and now he's probably talking about. Um, the Sunset Highway or, um, the Sunrise High area, and that. That just kind. That just kind of made me a little upset that we could have something to say about this. If, you know, if he wanted a brainstorm session, that's why I was kind of hitting on maybe some workshops. So if anything, if something ever happened, I don't know, maybe a few of us would like to. Sit down with some of the commissioners to see if we could spark something in some way, shape or form. Just to show community is still there. We're fully to work.
Well, it'd certainly be a topic if we do the annual meeting again. But of course, any commissioner, is any of you are free to reach out to the board at any time, just like any other community member, of course. But but as far as like a joint type of a thing, we've, you know, tried to do something about once a year. So we'll have to see if we can pull that together again.
Anything we would do on your behalf that would do you any good at this point? I mean, is there any voice on the planning commission that would help you get something that you feel like you need or?
Um, I mean, not that I not that I can think of.
I feel like we could do more damage than good.
No, no, it's not that. I appreciate the offer. I don't think, I mean, we're our relationship with the board is very good. The staff, you know, I think that they. I I I think the relationship is good, and I think they're receptive to the things that we bring to them. I think there is just a, you know, there's funding limitations. And I don't think there's much that the planning commission is gonna really probably be able to do to influence that. Just just kind of is what it is right now. So.
We could walk around outside while they're building the courthouse. Just tell.
Very useful, yeah.
That courthouse is pretty amazing, I gotta say. Having we're we've got a front row seat to watching it go up, which has been been pretty cool so far. So.
How do I go about getting a tour of the construction site?
Yeah, that's a good question. I have no poll in that regard.
I I I just got a tour of the new terminal, the airport a couple weeks ago. Pretty cool.
How do we get in on that, Tom?
Yeah, well, I was I was I was lobbying. Once I got my foot in the door again. But they were only allowing. Excuse me, us exporters. Until when it gets closer to being opened in the spring. So so I'm kind of waiting till then. And then I've got a I got a lot bunch of folks. I got folks from the school district that I've worked with when I was on that board that want to see it. And so I know I've got a lot of people want to see it. It's. It's pretty amazing. It's a nine acre continuous wood roof. Structure that's extremely impressive. All the wood was sustainably harvested within three hundred miles. They can tell you which forest the wood came from for all the various sections of the roof. It's it's a great story. It's a really, a really impressive structure. I was just blown away when I saw it. So. When that when that opens this spring, there'll be lots of lots of publicity, I'm sure, when people see it. Anyway, but I'm always being a construction guy. I love going on construction sites and seeing it in process. And that's as interesting to me as when it's done.
It's more interesting, actually.
It is. It is. Anyway.
Yeah. Also, you know, Bull Run has tours too in the summer, which would be kind of fun. I got the last five tickets last year of July. I guess right after that, they opened or they started taking. Selling tickets for August, but then the fire occurred. I don't know if they ever went into it. But that's an amazing tour too, that when it comes about, they'll let me know and I'll. Bring and I'll probably just buy the tickets and I know I can get rid of them. It's awesome. It's about an eight hour tour.
Oh, wow.
Okay.
You're always welcome to take a tour of Washington County. I can I can set that up for anyone.
Really?
You know, actually, I might kind of enjoy that. So let me know. I might. I I've always interested in learning about. You know, I don't I'm familiar with Washington County, but I, you know, I don't get over there as often. So I'm sure it'd be great. I'd love to learn about it. So if you have some time when you've had a free moment, you would be. I'd be interested to be quite honest. So. I'll take you up on it.
Yeah, let me know. I want to go.
Yeah, I might. I might be interested too.
And and by far, you all have to go on a hike with Murph. Yeah, up in the salmon. I had we've I had two great hikes with him and he's telling he's got full knowledge. It's he's a great tour guide. He's got all kinds of history and tell you everything about the area. We the last time we went, we happened to be up on the white on the salmon and the and the fish were spawning in the river. It was. That was like way cool. So he's a great tour guy and all my buddies that tagged along with us with us really, really enjoyed it. So put that on your bucket list. Go for a hike with Murph.
Anytime. Tom, I'm looking forward to our next one.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Okay, anything else? Great to see you all. Happy holidays.
Same here.
Happy holidays. Happy New Year.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.
All right.